Let me start with the land acknowledgement. We honor, respect, and acknowledge Elk Grove's first inhabitants, the Plains Mivock, who lived as sovereign caretakers of this land and these waterways since time immemorial. We commemorate and advocate for the descendants, the Wellton Ranch area tribe, the only federally recognized tribe in Sacramento County, who endured because of the bravery, resiliency, and determination of their ancestors, tribal members, and leaders. At this point, would you please silence your electronic devices, your cell phones, et cetera? And would the clerk please read the customary greeting?
The Elk Grove Planning Comi-- excuse me. The Elk Grove Planning Commission welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the meetings. The commission reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item, as it may be necessary. If you wish to address the commission during the meeting, please complete a speaker card and give it to the clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item.
With that, we move the agenda. Would the clerk please call the role?
Commissioners Oscar O'Conne.
Present.
Sandra Poole.
Present.
Verinder Singh.
Present.
Vice Chair Juan Fernandez is absent. We have Chair Suman Singa.
Present. At this point, I invite Commissioner Poole to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Stand. Hand over the card. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our and whose liberty and justice for all.
Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Chair Singa, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we move on. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. The planning commission cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. So at this point, I will open the general public comment opportunity. And we do have, I see, one speaker, one quevedo, if he's in the audience. Okay, we're sorry. Thank you.
Buenas tardes. Can I say in Spanish and in English, or is okay with you guys?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Okay. Buenas noches to todos. My name is Juan Quevedo, carpenter de esta area. El único comentario que quiero es compartir mi experiencia de cuando llegué y llevé a este país hace 22 años. Por la importancia de que trabajé en la construcción. Gracias a eso, cuando llegué aquí, mi hijo tenía dos años, y gracias a mi trabajo en la construcción, tuve servicio médico. Y después, mi esposa estuvo embarazada, entonces ahorita tengo. Gracias a eso y al servicio médico que yo tuve, pude hacerla en este país. Entonces, eso es todo lo que yo quiero agregar, de que fue, ha sido una oportunidad muy grande para mí, aparte de que fui a la escuela. Ahí en la escuela aprendí porque las medidas que yo tenía eran metros y aquí es en pulgadas. Entonces, ahí yo a un aprendizaje, eso me ayudó muchísimo para entender todo esto. Gracias. Ahora, lo voy a decir en inglés. Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Juan Quevedo. I'm a carpenter. I like to share my experience when I get to this country. Thanks to the event to the apprenticeship, it was a big opportunity for me to attend it and to go, because I have everything in meters, and right here is in inches and in feet. So that's why, that helped me a lot doing all of these things. And then, for the work that I have in construction, I have medical insurance for my two-year-old that I came here on this country. And after that, my wife was pregnant with my daughter, so now we are, me, my wife, my daughter, there's the youngest, and my son. So thank you for the opportunity to this country, and thank you for your attention and for your time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quevedo.
Thank you.
Given that there are no other public speakers, I will close the public comment opportunity, and we will move to the consent calendar items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar items, which are the regular meeting minutes of July 18th? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 18th meeting as prepared?
Chair, I move to approve the July 18, 2024 minutes as prepared.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved as presented. Then we have the regular meeting minutes of August 1, 2024. So do we have a motion to approve the meetings, the minutes of the meeting of August 1, 2024 as prepared or amended?
I move to approve the August 1, 2024 minutes as prepared.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing no oppositions, the minutes are approved as submitted. With that, we'll move on to the public hearing items, and will the clerk please call the first hearing item?
Item 5.1 is M2 Waterman RV Storage. It's project PLNG 23018.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioner, Sarah Kirchgesner, Development Services Planning. The project consists of a conditional use permit and major design review with deviation for a new recreational vehicle storage facility, as well as a tentative parcel map to subdivide the 16-acre parcel into seven lots. The project also includes a tree permit for the removal of one tree of local importance. The project site is located at 9846 Waterman Road. The project site totals 16 acres and is currently vacant. A single-family dwelling and associated buildings were removed from the site in 2021. The project site is encumbered by four high-voltage transmission lines with electrical towers that run through the site in a north-south direction along the eastern portion of the site. The project site is bordered by an industrial park to the west, the Elk Grove Water District offices to the north, vacant land to the south, and a multi-use path is located on the east side of the site within land owned by the Consumers Community Services District, as well as single-unit residential further to the east. The general plan land use designation is light industrial, and the zoning is MP Industrial Office Park. Auto and vehicle storage uses do require approval of a conditional use permit in the MP zone. The project is consistent with general plan policies and Elk Grove Municipal Code standards with approval of the design review and deviation. So for the conditional use permit, the project includes an RV storage facility with about a 1,650-square-foot office building, two canopy structures, and covered and uncovered RV parking stalls that total 302 spaces. Development that may occur on the project site is limited due to those overhead transmission easements, and they do not allow construction of new buildings within the easement area. And so that large portion of the site essentially is limited to that vehicle storage area and other uses that would not require construction of new structures. As mentioned, future development of parcels 1 through 6 do not propose development at this time. The project is compatible with the surrounding land uses. It is proposed to be screened from view to the east by a solid wall and fast-growing landscape screening, and future development of parcels 1 through 6 will provide additional screening. The project includes two gated driveways, one from Charleay Way and one from Wayne Heights Street. The eastern boundary includes landscape screening, and this is where that deviation comes into play. The project is proposing to install that landscape screening on the adjacent parcel, the open-space parcel owned by the CCSD. They would be including large shrubs and vines, which would provide enhanced screening of the wall and the RV storage area, and it would comply with the planting requirements under that power line easement. A condition of approval has been included on the project so that the applicant is responsible for the long-term maintenance of the landscaping and the irrigation. Here are the proposed elevations. The proposed architecture is a contemporary design with a variety of building materials, including plaster walls, steel canopies, metal siding and metal roofing. Colors are creams, terracotta, and black accents. And the proposed canopies consist of painted columns and a sloping metal roof. The project also includes a tentative parcel map subdividing the lot into seven parcels. There are no minimum lot area, lot depth, or lot frontage requirements in the MP zone, and as mentioned, no development is proposed for lots 1 through 6 at this time, and those lots are also not encumbered with the power line easement. Future development of the site would require future entitlements and design review at the time of those parcels being developed. The project includes a tree permel, tree permit for the removal of one tree of local importance. That tree is located within the power line easement. The building height maximum within that area, as well as tree maximum, is 15 feet. So staff does recommend approval of that tree to avoid future height conflicts within that easement area. The project is subject to the municipal code mitigation requirements for tree removals. No further environmental review is required under state SEQA guidelines, section 15183, with consistency with the general plan. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution finding no further environmental reviews required and approving the project subject to the conditions of approval in the resolution. I'm available for questions. The property owner and the applicant team is also available tonight to answer any questions of the commission.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions for staff?
None at this time.
No, sir.
Well, thank you at this time. I mean, no questions, so I will declare the public hearing open, and I'll invite the applicant to speak.
Hello. Hi, my name is Steve Loeffler. This project is under the entity M2 Waterman, and we're developers out of Granite Bay. And we're real excited about the project and thankful to Sarah and her team, which have done an excellent job. Second project with Sarah, we built the AAA facility over on Bruceville a few years back, and very excited to build another quality project and to work with the city of Elk Grove again. So if you have any questions on the project, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you.
Okay.
Should anything come up, we'd be--
Okay, great.
--call on you, but--
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Given that the applicant's spoken, I will now open the public comment opportunity. We have no written comments, and I do not believe we have any speakers signed up, in which case I will close the public comment opportunity. And as there was no public comment, the applicant does not need to respond, and I will declare the public hearing closed and move to commission deliberations and actions.
I had an opportunity to meet with staff, and I don't have any questions. It seemed pretty straightforward.
Commissioner O'Conne?
Same here. I had a couple of questions, but at my staff meeting, they answered them, so I don't have anything further.
No questions for me.
So with that, thank you again. I had an excellent meeting with staff, and I'd like to thank staff again for a well-put-together report. It's greatly appreciated. With that, do I have a motion on this agenda item?
Chairman Singa, I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution finding that no further environmental review is required under state SEQA guidelines, section 15183, and approving the conditional use permit, major design review with deviation, tentative parcel map, and tree removal permits for the M2 Waterman RV project, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the draft resolution.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Thank you. With that, we will move to the Iron Rock Industrial and--
Item 5.2 is Iron Rock Industrial. It's project PLNG 23039.
Good evening, Chair Singa and members of the planning commission. Joseph Dagomian, Associate Planner with the Development Services Department. Item 5.2 is the Iron Rock Industrial project. This project consists of a major design review with deviations for landscape islands. The result of the project will be the construction of two new single-story industrial warehouse buildings with accessory offices totaling approximately 42,300 square feet, along with associated parking, landscaping, and lighting improvements. There is also a request for a minor deviation for parking. The project is conditioned to comply with the city's climate action plan for non-residential development. The project site is located in the industrial area of the city, on the southeastern end of Iron Rock Way. It currently is undeveloped over the, over two parcels totaling approximately 2.8 acres in size. To the north of the parcels is a 24-foot-wide private road that is shared amongst these two properties, as well as four others. The zoning is heavy industrial, as well as the general plan. Here are just a couple of site photos of the project site, as well as the surrounding development around the site. The first photo on the top left is a view of the project site from the intersection of Iron Rock Way and the private driveway. The second photo is a view of the project site facing northeast along the private driveway. And then the images on the bottom are three warehouse projects that have been constructed over the course of the past four or five years. So this is a, on your screen now is the site plan and the landscape plan. The project will be developed with two buildings consisting of 42,300 square feet with accessory office spaces. That's approximately 84% warehouse and 16% office, along with associated parking, landscaping, and lighting improvements. Access to the site will be provided through the existing 24-foot-wide private road at the north end of the parcel. There will be two driveway access points off of the private driveway that have been reviewed and approved by the fire department. There are 42 parking spaces proposed, along with two accessible parking spaces. The project includes landscaping along the interior property lines. The Iron Rock Way frontage is adjacent to the private road and within the parking lot area. The proposed landscape plan has been reviewed in accordance with the city's requirements, and it is in compliance with those standards. As I mentioned, there is a design review deviation request for landscape islands. In the municipal code, parking lots of five spaces or more shall provide a landscape island at a minimum. The island shall be placed every 10 spaces. The project site is proposing two rows of parking, each consisting of 21 parking spaces. Two of the locations are proposing 11 spaces between the landscape islands, which exceeds the maximum of 10 spaces. To maximize the parking available within the constrained site, the applicant is requesting a deviation to allow greater than the maximum space between the landscape islands. The proposed deviation meets the intent of the zoning code to improve the usability of the site regarding vehicular and pedestrian movement and accessibility, as well as comply with the other landscape standards for the overall parking lot shading. Here's the architect, here's the building elevations for one of the buildings. Prior to the meeting, the planning commission circulated a green sheet. The applicant has made some, made a minor update to the architecturals. So the architecturals is primarily going to consist of a concrete tilt-up with a variety of colors, materials, and textures. This includes the metal roll-up doors, the recessed aluminum storefront windows, and the addition of the canopies. Staff has found that the architecture is consistent with the city's design guidelines. So a little bit more on the green sheet. With the addition of the canopies to the elevations, staff is recommending that these, the updated plans be included into the project submittal and are recommending the deletion of condition number 33. There's also a minor deviation from parking. Per the zoning code, the minor deviation is for provisions not to exceed 10% of the respective development standard. This project does require 45 parking spaces. 42 are proposed, which is a 6.6% reduction. The site does contain multiple site constraints, including two landscape drainage swales, which restrict the developable area of the project site. These areas are larger than the minimum landscape requirements under the city's standards, but are required to meet drainage and water quality hydro-modification standards and cannot be modified. The requested deviation is justifiable due to the number of available onsite, on-street parking spaces in the immediate vicinity of the site. Specifically, the project site does feature approximately 325 feet of linear frontage on Iron Rock Way. As part of the project, there aren't any new driveways proposed off of Iron Rock Way, just the private drive aisle. So with that frontage, there could be approximately 13 on-street parking spaces. The project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to state SEQA guidelines, section 15332. This is the infill development exemption. So tonight, the staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the project with the deletion of condition number 33, as well as the inclusion of the revised plans as mentioned in the green sheet. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
No, sir. I had the opportunity to meet with the applicant, and they had a couple of concerns, but they've been taken care of since, so I'm good with this project.
Thank you. Question, Singa?
Same for me, Chair. I was able to meet with applicant, and I have no questions.
Commissioner Poole?
No questions.
Okay. I guess at this point, thank you for a well-put-together report, Joseph. Appreciate it. I will at this point declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to speak.
Good evening, Chair Singa. Members of the commission, Jim Gillum of Gillum Consulting, representing the applicant, the owner of the property. I want to first thank the commissioners for your time and meeting with us on this project, and also to staff for working through the entitlement process and design of this project. We're very pleased to bring it forth. Jackson Properties has a rich history of development of this type of product in the Sacramento region, and specifically in Elk Grove. Because staff did such an excellent job of the presentation, I don't need to go into any detail on the project, other than to say that we are in agreement with the deletion of the, with the deletion of that conditions. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval and look forward to answering any questions you have.
Questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you, Mr. Gillum. If anything comes up, we'll call you back.
Thank you.
With that, I will open the public comment opportunity. I believe, Sandy, do we have anybody? I see nobody who signed up. Given that nobody has signed up to speak on this, to make any comments, I will close the public comment opportunity. And as there's been no public comment, the applicant does not need to respond, and I will declare the public hearing closed. With that, we will move to commission deliberations and action.
I appreciated the opportunity to meet with the applicant earlier this week and the really thorough walkthrough, as well as the briefing from staff, and I don't have any other questions and can support this project.
Does any other commissioner have any comments? If not, I would entertain emotional the agenda item.
I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution finding the project exempt from SEQA pursuant to state SEQA guidelines, section 15332, and approving a major design review with deviations for landscape islands and minor deviation for parking for the Iron Rock Industrial Project, PLNG 23-039, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval included in the draft resolution excluding condition of approval number 33 and inclusion of the revised plans as part of the project approvals.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I hear no opposition, so the motion is passed as presented. Thank you. So with that, Sandy, we'll move to the next item.
Item 5.3 is Allen Ranch Medical Building. It's project PLNG 029. I'm sorry, 23029.
Good evening again, commission. Sarah Kirchgesner. The project for you tonight is the Allen Ranch Medical Building project, and it consists of a major design review for seven medical office buildings, along with associated site improvements, including parking, lighting, and landscaping. The project does include an alternate design that would split one of the buildings into two smaller buildings within the footprint of the original building, which would bring the total number of buildings to eight. The project also includes a tree permit for the removal of trees of local importance. The project site is located on the east side of Laguna Springs Drive, just south of Elk Grove Boulevard, within the Laguna Ridge specific plan area. The project site is currently vacant and totals 5.9 gross acres. The project site is bordered by Laguna Springs Drive to the east, to the west. Across Laguna Springs Drive is the park at Laguna Springs Residential Care Facility. The Elk Grove Auto Mall is located to the west of the project site, excuse me, to the east of the project site, and no buildings exist on the project site. The project site contains 114 trees, including 75 trees of local importance. A future well site is also located on the west side of the project site, and to the north is a vacant parcel that is undeveloped. For some background information, the city council approved the original Allen Ranch project in 2005, which included 80 acres. The current project site is located on lots 8 through 12 of that original project site. The access locations, as well as driveways and utility stubs, were approved and/or installed as approved by the council in 2005 and installed in 2008. The general plan land use designation for the site is regional commercial, and the zoning is Laguna Ridge specific plan and shopping center SC. Medical services general uses are permitted in the SC zone, and the project is consistent with general plan policies and Elk Grove municipal development standards. The project includes seven one-story medical office buildings totaling 65,710 square feet, with buildings ranging in size from 4,200 to 20,000 square feet, including that alternate design described earlier, which would bring the total to eight buildings. The project includes three bio-retention drainage facilities, as well as low-impact development LID features on the site. The project includes three driveways on Laguna Springs Drive. Two pedestrian connections are proposed from the project site, from Laguna Springs Drive to the auto mall-- Laguna Springs Drive to the auto mall, Laguna Grove Court, as shown on the map, shown highlighted in yellow. The alternate design, as requested by the applicant, would split building 9655 into two smaller buildings within that footprint of the original building. The final design would be determined at the time of construction, and this alternate design is in compliance with all development standards as well. Here are the proposed typical elevations. The proposed architecture building is contemporary designed with a variety of building materials, including exterior plaster walls, stone veneer, steel canopies, and painted C, C-channel accents. Colors include gray, tans, and browns. The project's colors and materials are complementary to the surrounding neighborhood character. The project includes the removal of 56 trees of local importance. These trees include a mix of interior live oak and valley oak. 31 of the trees proposed for removal are due to the site layout, and 25 are, the trees are due to health, public safety reasons. Staff did work with the applicant to integrate healthy trees, additional healthy trees into the project design, but ultimately it was determined that it was not feasible. Staff supports the proposed tree removals based on the following: tree health, the site conditions and constraints of the site, Elk Grove Municipal Code development standards, and improvement plan requirements, project feasibility, and aesthetics. And I'm going to go into detail on each one. For tree health, many of the oak trees on the site are in significantly compromised health, per the harvest report, and the applicant did place a priority on retaining trees that have the best opportunity to thrive in the post-development condition. The site is a long, narrow site that is extremely tight in the east-west dimension. As I said before, the access driveway utility stubs were approved and installed as part of the original Allen Ranch project. Additionally, the access to that northerly parcel that's owned by a different property owner would rely on a shared driveway. So a lot of these access points were predetermined. There is the well site, which also provides an additional constraint in that southern portion of the site. The configuration of the utilities as well, because of the sidewalk and the landscaping, those utilities require that the building setbacks be maintained. Essentially, we worked with the applicant to see if they could reduce that front setback, but because of the utilities, the buildings really can't have a reduced setback along Laguna Springs Drive. There are development standards and improvement standards that impacted the ability to retain those existing healthy trees. The larger trees in the parking areas could not be saved and located within islands because of the circulation of the project, and the proposed landscape coverage is already at the minimum required, and the proposed parking is only three stalls above the minimum stalls required. According to the applicant, the project site is appropriate for the site and represents the square footage of leasable area that achieves project feasibility for the applicant, and the parking ratios are at the minimum for their functionality for that intended medical use. There are existing mature trees along Laguna Springs Drive that are providing screening, and the project would be planting 76 new trees, including 25 24-inch box trees, as well as evergreen trees that would provide additional screening. Additionally, the proposed buildings would also provide screening for properties, single-family, and the park project from, across Laguna Springs Drive. So based on staff's analysis, the tree removals meet the required findings for a tree permit. The project is subject to the mitigation requirements for tree removals in the municipal code. Based on a discussion with the applicant, staff is recommending a minor change to the conditions of approval, and we're recommending the deletion of condition of approval 50, requiring reciprocal parking between the parcels of the development. Additionally, a change is recommended for condition 56 to require that, about, well, the conditions already required a boundary line adjustment to be completed prior to the first building permit, and this condition would require that each parcel have sufficient parking to meet the minimum parking requirements for the associated building located within that parcel pursuant to the requirements of the municipal code. No further environmental review is required under state SEQA guidelines, section 15162 and 15183. The project is relying on the Laguna Ridge Specific Plan EIR and the general plan EIR. Staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution, finding no further environmental review is required, and approving the project, including the deletion of condition of approval number 50 and the additional language to condition 56 as discussed. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Singh, we'll start with you. Commissioner Poole?
Just a process question. So the deletion of 50 and the alternation to 56, I'm looking at what we got in our packet. So this occurred after?
This discussion happened today, and so we did not provide a green sheet because it was after 4:00 PM. So you have not seen this until right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, good. Commissioner, go on.
No, sir. I had some concern about the number of trees that were being cut, but after meeting with staff and going to the property, I, I don't have any problem with it.
So I think I had the same concern when I discussed this with staff and with the applicant, that the planning commission does take trees very seriously and the loss of trees. So I'm glad to see that, a, there are the normal mitigation requirements and the fact that 76 new trees are being planted as replacements. So the net result is that hopefully, I mean, I understand they're not going to be trees of local importance, but there will be trees, and at the end of the day, that's what you're looking at, is making sure there's enough greenery in, in the city. So with that, I feel comfortable with where things stand. So thank you for that, and thank you for explaining. I know you and I went through the trees and the tree replacement and gory details, so I greatly appreciate that. Thank you. At this point, what I will do, hearing nothing else from the commission, is I'll declare the public hearing open and invite the applicant to speak.
Good evening again, Jim Gillum of Gillum Consulting. Chair Singh, thank you for having me up, members of the commission. As with the last project, you know, this was a project that we worked very closely with staff to identify the areas of concern on this highly constrained site, and do our very best to present a project that we thought was worthy of approval. Staff did a great job with presentation tonight, so I don't have anything to add to the overall presentation, other than just to say that we have, this has been a project that's been on the Jackson books since, well, the early 2000s, and we're looking forward to bringing it to fruition so that we can provide office space to the community. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions. Just following up on the comments of my fellow commissioners earlier, I appreciate the diligence that the applicant and the staff went to try to save as many trees as possible. In our conversation earlier, it was really clear that that was a priority, so just wanted to, to highlight that.
Yeah, thank you. And I did omit one thing. I do, we are in agreement with the changes to the conditions, and wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? No?
No.
With that, I will open the public comment opportunity. Note that nobody has signed up, so I will close the public comment opportunity. And again, as there is no public comment, the applicant does not need to respond, and I will declare the public hearing closed, and we shall move to commission deliberations and actions. Any further thoughts about the project?
Nothing for me.
No, sir.
Hearing none. Do we, do we have a motion on the agenda item?
Chair Singh, I move to adopt the resolution, finding that no further environmental review is required under state, under state SEQA guidelines, sections 15162 and 15183, and adopting the major design review and tree permit for the Allen Ranch Medical Building Project, PLNG 23-029, based on the findings and, and subject to the conditions of approval contained in this draft resolution.
And the addition of the, the deletion and addition of the language of the new condition?
As she said.
Yes, and
Thank you.
With the deletion of COA 50 and the revision of condition of approval 56. Okay? That should satisfy all requirements.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion is approved. With that, we'll move to regular agenda items. There are no regular agenda items on this agenda, so we shall move to the director's report.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you. So on your day is, is the director's report. Couple things I'll highlight. We do not have any items for the 19th, so you'll have the night off there. We are also tracking for the October 3rd meeting. Yeah, I got the date right. For October 3rd, we were hoping to have one ready. It's probably not going to be, so you'll likely also have the night off there, and so we'll have a couple of items for you at the October 17th, if I'm doing the math correctly in my head. So just a heads up on those. Council did consider at last week's meeting the lighting standards that you saw back in early August, and went ahead with first reading of that ordinance. No changes made, so second reading will be on for next week's agenda and then effective 30 days thereafter. In terms of other items, there's one coming up for the zoning administrator with a date to be determined. We also have a item going to the council. I think we mentioned this at a prior meeting for next week to get some direction on revisions to the Old Town SPA relative to CUP requirements for alcohol-selling institutions, breweries, bars, and wineries. So available for questions if you have them.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to planning commission matters. Hearing none. Given that there's none, we shall finally move on to adjournment, and there being no other agenda items. The meetings are adjourned at 6:42. Thank you.